Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hello everyone, really glad you're here today.
We are really glad that Colin and Julia have joined us today as well. Hey guys.
Hi everyone.
How you doing everybody?
And hello to you, welcome in the chat. Say hello, let us know that you're excited to hear about the Rose Oil winner. We'll be announcing this year's Rose Oil winner here in just a few minutes. Let us know where you're coming in from. We're excited to chat with you guys here today. This is a special request training. This is actually a topic that was brought up in our Get Oiling Facebook group a few weeks ago by an awesome member of our community who is interested in providing more dialed-in ways to serve her people. So to be able to let folks opt in to email or text or both, or maybe even snail mail. So if you're somebody who likes to send happy mail, you want to grab good addresses for people, get their contact preferences and keep them engaged for the long term, you can do that all with Get Oiling and we're going to show you how to do it today with some done-for-you resources as well. So welcome, South Dakota, Northern Illinois, Virginia, hello Florida, North Carolina. We've got folks coming in from everywhere. Welcome. We're excited to have you guys here. So we're going to pop out a video, get into some slides. We've got a lot to get into today, including again, a very exciting announcement. We're going to be sharing the Rose Oil winner. So if you guys didn't know this already, if you're new to Get Oiling lore, we do this every year. So we go to Aroma Sharing. We are a sponsor at Aroma Sharing. That's this really great vendor event that happens a couple of days leading into convention in Salt Lake City. And we offer this great little promo and what it is, is a completely free way to enter and win Rose Oil. And somebody is winning that oil today. But first, let's get into today's topic, how to customize and offer contact communication preferences. So after we announce our Rose Oil winner, we're going to get into a few things, including how to tailor your communication based on contact preference, how to maximize exposure to educational opportunities, and how to allow self-selection for email and text preferences. We'll talk about how this can help keep your people happy and subscribe to you. Because at the end of the day, if you're going through all of these efforts to exist and be found and connect with people online, we want to be able to stay in touch with those people who do say yes for the long run. And of course, as always, we'll get into live help and Q&amp;A. So if you came here today looking for help, you're in the right place. We dedicate these calls to working live with you. That's why we call this a weekly work session. You're going to learn something new, but we're also going to roll up our sleeves and get into action. So if you have those questions here on the live call, add them to the Q&amp;A as we go through the call. Add them now. There is no wrong question and there is no wrong time. Go ahead and add those if you got them. And if you would like to join us, if you're watching this as a replay later, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. These are totally free and open to all brand partners who are looking to work smarter and get smart systems to work for them in their business. This is a great opportunity for you to learn more about Get Oiling if you aren't using smart tech tools to grow your brand partner business, or if you're somebody who's really just interested in what it takes to grow a business successfully with Young Living in a way that doesn't run your life, you're in the right place. I hope you come and join us. If you'd like to work with us one-on-one on one of these calls, we do dedicate the second half of these calls to this purpose. If you sign up for it, we will provide you the space. GetOiling.com/websitereview is where you can go to sign up for one of these slots. We offer them every week. And if you would like to just hand off your project to someone to do the work for you, also an option, very competitively priced and very friendly expert service from our incredible people who do great work on our team, getoiling.com/concierge. All right. So hey, congratulations, Yulia Yanovsky. If you are here, pop your hand up. I'd love to know. I'd love to bring you out if you're not. We are certainly excited to get this Rose Oil shipped off to you. So congratulations, Yulia. We are so very excited to have you be the winner this year. And Greg, you got the bottle on you, right?
I do. Let's turn this on him briefly. Right here.
Fantastic. All right. Yeah. So Yulia is getting a bottle of Rose Oil shipped. Greg's got it there in hand. So we'll be getting in touch with you soon to confirm your shipping information. We're really excited to get that off to you. All right. So yeah, we got a lot of congratulations here in the chat. Everybody loves Rose Oil. Do you guys have Rose Oil at home? I love Rose Oil. It's one of the things that is just so awesome to get when you get enough of those loyalty points stocked up, right? And how many of you guys bought yours with loyalty points? Like that is such a great thing to do and it's so incredible. It lasts so long. And it's just so precious. Highest frequency of all the oils. That's so, so very special. Awesome. Well, glad that we can spread more of that love around with you guys. And yeah, we're just really thrilled to be able to do this with you every year. All right. So let's talk about this here today. Let me know in the chat, do you use both email and text to communicate with your customers, with your leads, with your team? Right? Is this a both proposition? Do you do one? Do you do the other? Or maybe you're a happy mail person. Do you do happy mail? Do you send stuff out via snail mail? So this is a really exciting way to engage with people. Because and regardless of how you choose, right? All three of these options are excellent viable choices. And they're exciting and excellent and effective to use if and only if the person who is receiving that communication said yes to that form of communication, right? If they said yes to it and you're sending them what they want, then this is a fantastic proposition. So today, we're going to make sure that you're doing those things. You are connecting with them very specifically through the means that they prefer and that you're sending them the stuff that they are most interested in. All right. So the goal at the end of the day, for all of the work that we do, to show up online, to attract people, to get people started with Young Living, to all of this. The goal of all of this is to first capture new leads and keep them curious, right? That's why we show up on social media, for example. That's why we write blog posts. And then we want to guide them toward classes or one-on-ones, right? So maybe we have events that we host. They may be in person. They may be virtual. Or we offer these consults where we can sit down, learn more about somebody, and then show them the solutions that Young Living offers that can help them achieve their goals. We then help them sign up with Young Living. We support product use as a lifestyle. And at the end of the day, to achieve this, we need to keep people engaged long-term, which means that we need to capture attention and we need to retain that attention for the long haul, right? If we're going to have leads who say yes to sharing and we have people who say yes to Young Living when we share, and we have people who say yes every month to continue with Young Living, we have to keep people engaged. Now, preferences are really critical. Because if we give people things that they don't want, they get frustrated. How many of us love receiving junk mail, right? What is junk mail? Typically, it's stuff that were sent that we didn't ask for, right? We all know that and we're all frustrated by it. So preferences are really critical here. Because it is very easy in a world where people are constantly distracted, don't remember what they said yes to, committed to, et cetera. It's very easy to lose track of this, right? To drop the ball in some really important ways where this is concerned. So everyone is going to have different tolerances for texts and emails. And if what you're sending doesn't meet their needs, they feel unheard. They feel like a number. They feel like they're just being pitched to. They are a tool in your pursuit of profit. That's how they feel, right? If all you do is reach out to somebody in a blast on the first of the month to say, hey, by the way, buy this stuff. Or when there's a sale, hey, by the way, buy this stuff. Or you know, you reach out to them when they're about to go inactive, right? But we don't send them anything helpful in the interim. We are treating them like a number, right? They are unheard. We aren't meeting their needs. And if we want to succeed at what we do, we have to flip the script on that, right? So personalized conditional communication is what's going to help you keep people engaged in the best and longest way possible. And with Get Oiling, this is something that is scalable, right? You don't have to go and ask every person individually, well, what would you like? What would you like? I could set you up. I'm going to make a note in your account and then go read every account before I go and do a thing to communicate, right? With Get Oiling, you can capture these preferences on autopilot in perpetuity and then simply go in and make a couple of quick selections before you go and send off what it is that you want to say so that you know you're meeting everybody, regardless of who they are and what their preference is, the way that they have asked to be met, right? So the cycle here is going to work two ways, right? So we're going to address how we approach this for our leads. So these are people for whom we are hoping to share, right? Like we are hoping to move them toward a class, toward a one-on-one, where they can see that Young Living is a solution to their problems and they can say yes and get started, right? So for leads, they're going to opt in on your website, right? This is typically going to be maybe your weekly wellness tips, if you offer weekly wellness tips, right? This could be a free resource. If you have some other lead magnet that you offer on your site, maybe there's a download, a free video, a recording of a class, something like this. Leads will opt in for tips from you or some kind of a free resource. And then they're going to start receiving what they asked for immediately. Because in Get Oiling, when they put their name and email in on a landing page for tips or for a free resource, they are going to automatically be sent what's called a campaign. That campaign is going to drip out messages, email or text, to them immediately. That's going to give them what they asked for and then maybe send some additional messages. And ideally, if you're following the systems that we teach, you are sharing information weekly with them to build the relationship. And of course, if you aren't familiar with what I'm referring to here, definitely check out our blog posts and our YouTube playlist that talk about publishing content, right? So what we're doing here essentially is releasing a lead-facing piece of content every week and emailing our list about it. We do that every week so that people stay engaged, they stay interested. And when they finish the maybe initial sequence, right? So they said, I would like to get your free download where you send five different messages, right, to them about what the download discusses. After that campaign concludes, we invite them to explore more. Or if you're using our weekly wellness tips, at the end of every message, there is an invitation to hit reply, right? And if they say yes to exploring more, they're going to receive more information from you and this cycle can repeat as long as they want to keep learning. Another way that you could look at this is, let's say you are someone, maybe just show me, a show of hands. How many of you who use Get Oiling have a bunch of educational campaigns that you really wish that you were making better use of, right? Like maybe you've got one that talks about back-to-school wellness and you've got another one that talks about, you know, a ditch and switch or something like that, right? And you would just really love for more people to be able to take advantage of these. So what I'm proposing for you here today is that for your leads, provided that these campaigns are lead-appropriate, you can say here, if you would like to learn how to green your bathroom, put your name and email in here and you can start receiving these messages that'll show you a tip a day for seven days. Well, after that seven days, we can actually provide them an option to pick another thing, right? So maybe you want to offer them another thing that shows them how to green their kitchen, right? And now you've got a campaign that teaches them how to green their kitchen and they can go select this. And this loop can continue as long as they want to keep learning, right? So the cycle for customers is going to be kind of similar, right? Because we do want to continue educating customers toward greater product use. So what you're going to be doing in this case is you're going to be importing your customers from your Young Living Virtual Office file. When you go to import contacts in your Get Oiling dashboard, we walk you through all of the steps that you need to follow and there are screenshots there. It is quite easy to do. But then from there, you're going to take your customers and invite them to get your tips, to join your education vault or to explore a new product line via a campaign or other piece of information that you'd like to share. So you're actually taking your VO file into Get Oiling and using that to communicate with your people in targeted ways. And what you can do here again is keep sharing weekly to stay connected. Maybe you offer some kind of a newsletter through your unique oily perspective. And then of course, when they're done learning about a particular topic, you present those additional opportunities to keep learning. Maybe they got started and you offered an educational campaign on Ningxia because you signed them up with a Ningxia bundle. And then once the Ningxia campaign concludes, maybe we're sending an additional link that says, hey, would you like to learn more about the thieves line? Click here and you can learn more about the thieves line, right? Would you prefer to get this via text? Go ahead and select that here, right? It's pretty cool. So if they say yes, they receive more information. And again, the cycle repeats as long as they want to keep learning. Now, setting communication preferences, I want to make sure that we're kind of clear together on what all of this actually means, especially as folks who are importing a contact list from a virtual office file, that legally does include an entire list of people that you technically legally are able to contact, but all of whom did not actually give you express permission to contact them, right? So we do need to approach the, we need to approach the contacting of our VO file in a deliberate and we'll say delicate way, right? Because we want to make sure that the communication that we're bothering to send is going to people who aren't bothered by it, right? We want to send to people who want to receive it. So first, when you are using any form on the Get Oiling site, if that is a phone input on a page or a landing page, that is treated as a text opt-in. So if you go to just send a text to all your contacts that you have phone numbers for, those aren't necessarily people who said, yes, send me texts, right? So importantly, the cell numbers that you have, the phone numbers in a VO file, would also technically be treated this way, right? So we can't just go into our Get Oiling and pick all of our contacts and say, I want to send a text to all of these people, right? Because again, not everybody said, hey, please text me, right? And we want to make sure that we are sending information that is welcome and that it's not a bother to people, right? So this consent, what I'm discussing here, that you have their information does not equal consent to the degree that I am sharing with you today, that I'm advising you to follow today, right? So consent isn't automatic. Those numbers in VO or forms are not necessarily equal to permission to contact them via that means. So if you want to use text, what I recommend doing is offering it explicitly, right? As a form option or a text encode. So if somebody texts thieves to your Get Oiling phone number, maybe that triggers a thieves campaign. That is a text opt-in. That is somebody saying, I want to be heard. I want to hear from you via text, right? So we do want to be clear on that. And then of course, if you plan to communicate with people via text and you're using a landing page, you want to make sure that you are communicating there. When you enter your phone number, you are telling me that it's okay to text you, right? We want to make sure that that's clear. So today, we're going to talk about building a preferences page that lets every contact choose what they receive from you and how, right? So an important note here is that Get Oiling already has your bases covered, right? Where you want to legally comply with, and there are some very hefty fees, depending on what country you're in, that pertain to doing this incorrectly, right? So if you go into your footer, for instance, in Get Oiling where there is a mandatory opt-out link and you change that and you don't do it compliantly, it could cost you big, right? And we do have some big warning language there that I hope has deterred anyone from making that change who is not fully informed on how to do it. But we already have a required preferences link in every email footer, but it doesn't do the extent of what we're going to talk about today. It does the basic legal requirement for you, which is basically allowing them, and it does go one step further. It gives them the opportunity to opt-out entirely. And also, if they are enrolled in different campaigns, they can choose to unsubscribe from specific campaigns that they are subscribed to, right? So this is already provided for you, just so you know, right? And you could just move forward today using that and you're good to go, right? But that only manages current campaigns or a global opt-out, meaning they no longer receive any email from you, period. So the page that we built today doesn't replace this. It just adds more flexible options for you to be able to keep people longer based on their interests and their preferences. And this is going to keep your contacts engaged before they decide to just give up and opt-out of hearing from you. All right. So the automations are what make this work. So for the page that we're building, these automations are going to either opt your contacts in or out of text messages from you, opt them in or out of emails from you, and then apply or remove tags for segmentation, including for text. I actually really recommend, even though you do have a way to filter in Get Oiling, people who are opted into text, I like having a like a tag that you can search for. Like here are the people who said yes to text, so that I can be super clear about that when I am trying to send something out. Maybe I've got a broadcast I need to send. And these really are the people who explicitly said, send me texts, right? And then here we could also apply or remove educational campaigns, right? So all those campaigns that you want to be sharing and making use of with your people. So what this page is going to do is allow your contacts to opt in or out of your texts. Same for email. And then to choose a new topic that they want to learn about. And it's also going to grab their address if you want to use that part as well, if you want to collect their address for snail mail. So what we'll do first is prepare before you build. You want to decide which educational campaigns you want to offer. And one thing that I didn't put into the slides here that's important, you want to go into the campaign settings for each of those campaigns and make sure that you are choosing an option for how it sends, such that it can send via email and also could send via text. Maybe you do email preferred and if they're opted out of email and they are opted into text, then they would be able to just receive that via text, right? But it would still send to others via email. You can do email and/or text. And let me just shift over here real quick because I think this is actually pretty, pretty, pretty important for us to explore together, just so you're super clear on what this means. Let me get into my dashboard here and show you. So if I wanted to share a, let me see if I have like a Ningxia campaign in here. I don't. Oh, that's because I'm in the wrong account. Hello, sorry. Let's go to Jean. She'll have a Ningxia account for sure. All right. In our campaigns. Beautiful. Here's a Ningxia Red email class. I would go into here. I would go into settings and I would choose maybe email and/or text, use the context preference. Yeah. So you could do this here, okay? And do this for each of the campaigns that you intend to connect to this page. Because what your person is going to be doing is saying, I want emails and here's the email that I want. Or I want texts and here's, or I want emails and here is the education that I want. I want text. Here is the education that I want. And you want your campaigns that are attached to that page to be able to send correctly, right? So make sure that you go into the settings. Remember, go to the campaign you want to use. Go to settings, go to email and/or text, use the context preference, save changes. And then you can proceed with the rest of the steps that we're going to follow here today. So decide those. Make sure you've got that setting in place. We'll also create an automation to apply each campaign, right? Because this is actually something we're going to be setting up in page forms. So let me show you here real quick. Here's that campaign that we were just working on. So here's our Grow Class Ningxia Red email. And I'm going to go over to settings. And I'm going to go to automations and I'll create a new one and say Ningxia class campaign. And this is actually add Ningxia class campaign. There we go. Add action, campaign, add or restart campaign. And then there we go. Let me just type in Ningxia. That's not it. There we go. Perfect. So I'm going to add action there. Add automation, repeat the step for all the campaigns that you intend to offer on this page. And you really could choose as many as you like, however many you have that you want to be able to offer. We're going to put them in a dropdown menu, right? And we're going to allow people to choose them. And that automation, when they choose that selection, is going to start sending them that next offer, right? Then we'll claim your resource bundle. This was sent out to you via email earlier if you were on our list. But we also, I think, can pop it into the chat as well. This will be on the blog. It will also be connected, that blog post will be connected in the replay video that goes up on YouTube. But you're going to claim this resource bundle. We're going to click here and click claim. You can actually see here that we've got a communication preferences page. And then we've got a handful of automations that I wanted to make sure that you had. These don't currently exist on their own automatically in your account. So I wanted you to have these. And we're going to make sure that these are connected to the page. And these are basically just going to opt them into email, into text, into both, out of email, out of text, and out of both, right? So they're already pre-made. We're going to connect them all to this preferences page. And actually, when you claim this, it's also going to bring over a preferences updated confirmation page that we'll be exploring in just a bit as well, just to complete the whole process. All right. So when we build our page, we are going to first visit our preferences confirmation page that got claimed in that bundle and add our photo or logo to it, just to make it complete. And this is going to be really simple, really easy. Let me show you. It's this one right here. Preferences updated confirmation page. And you can see here, this simply says, your preferences have been updated. Where do you want to go next? And it's got links to your blog, your homepage and your contact. And here we have an opportunity to replace with your photo or logo. And we'll pretend this is Jane. I'll pop her in right there. And we can save it. We can do a quick preview here so that you can see what it will look like. And of course, it has her footer because I have a custom footer on this page. It's got her menu. It looks nice. It's good to go. All you need to do is swap out your photo or logo and this will plug into your website exactly as you have it set up. So that's your step one. Super easy to knock that one out and get that complete. Then we're going to go to our preferences page. And what we're going to do here, everything on this preferences page is in the page settings under the leads tab. Literally everything. Let me show you. On this page, there is nothing. If you, if you look at it in the editor, there is nothing there. Here, nothing. You see it? It just says form, right? Doesn't look like anything, but check out the preview. When we check out the preview, you can see that it has lots of stuff here. But all of this is going to be in the settings under leads. And here are our different options, right? So we can modify our message to show on the lead capture form. You can change the lead capture headline, change the button, the color of the button, et cetera. Do ensure that the lead capture form shows on the page and that you have this little code right here where it says form, right here. And if you lose that for whatever reason, there are ways, if we wanted to add another section and you wanted to add something to this section, you can come over here and add the form, right? So see, well, I already have the form tag added, so it's keeping me from doing it. So there we go. All right. So it is easy to pop that in if you need to edit it. So everything we're doing again is going to be in under settings, under leads. All right. So here's what we're going to do. Let me come back over to my slides here. So we're going to open our page settings, click the leads tab. We're going to edit the form copy as needed. So that's under the message to show on lead capture form, if you want to change that. And then we're going to attach the correct automations where needed and then preview, save and test our page. So before we do that, let's just go ahead and take a quick tour of what's on this page and how it functions. And I'll use the preview option here so we can take a look at this together. So essentially what we're doing is we're telling them, we're updating your communication preferences. We want to make sure you only get the updates that matter most to you, deliver the way you prefer. Use the options below to choose how we stay in touch. You can update your choices anytime. I'm requiring name, email and phone because if somebody wants to opt into text and they didn't give me a phone number, this is not going to work out. But they can choose that they don't want text, right? So you are getting an either or here for sure. What's their name? What's their email? What's their phone? And they can pick any of these that they want to apply. They could say, I want snail mail. They could say, I prefer to hear from you from text, right? And they will of course, need to put all of their information in here. If they chose snail mail, they're going to enter their street address here, their city, state, postal code, country. Then we're going to collect information on what they're interested in. What are we most interested in? Wellness tips and education, product launches and promos, events and classes, business building resources. You could change these up and make these more topic focused around oils, right? This could be about hormone balance for women. This could be about cleaning that's safe for pets and babies. This, you know, you could put whatever you want in these. And they're going to help you segment your audience. I'll show you how that works in a moment. And then we're going to give them a dropdown. What would we like to learn next, right? So what would we like to learn next? Choose an option below and we'll send it right away. And here we're going to, so if I want to learn about my favorite antioxidant drink, Ningxia Red. If we want to learn about my favorite cleaner thieves, want to learn about whatever your resources are, right? Whatever the campaigns are, we're actually going to be attaching and offering. You can call these classes, right? So you want to enroll in a new class, choose an option below and I'll send it to you right away based on the preferences that you've shared. You might want to note, I'm not going to send you education via postal mail unless you ask for it. You could also option, put an option here for people to maybe just give a, is there anything else you'd like to share or say? And they could, you know, say something. And then here's opt-out options. Pick any that apply. I'm choosing to keep no way I want to stay. I'm choosing to keep no way I want to stay as the one that's visible so that they don't touch it. But they can also say, I want out of email. I want out of text or I don't want anything else from you ever at all. Right? Opt out of all. And so once they do that and they click update, it's going to take them to that 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 preferences updated page that we have already updated and completed. And from there, we're good to go. So let's go into our settings and explore actually what this looks like on the backend. So our lead capture messages here, update your communication preferences is the headline. Update is the copy on that button at the bottom of the form. And you can see here, these are all required. Name, email, phone and how would you like to hear from us? Right? So they must pick at least one thing on this, how would you like to hear from us? So check this out. We've got a list pick multiple. And when we go to edit the list, you can see that that here they say email. Here they say text. I recommend that you under text, put text updates here. Right? And then also importantly, and actually, if you want to explore these automations, let me actually, before you do that, let me confirm. I might have actually put text into, yeah, the text tag is already here. So don't worry about adding a tag. I did it for you. All right? So this is going to be where we attach our, like all the information that we want to send. So for instance, when someone opts into text, we want to maybe send a campaign that confirms, hey, you have just, it's just one message that sends right away that says, hey, you've just signed up for updates from me. You can hit, you can reply with stop anytime if you want to opt out. Right? Which is an important thing that you need to send right away to anyone. But your campaign might not necessarily say that. So that campaign that's included with this opt contact into text automations, that's going to take care of that for you. So what we're going to do, and this is very important. Here we're going to say, we're going to search for opt into email. That's this one. Automation. Opt into opt contact into text. There we go. Email and text. Here we're going to opt contact into email and text. And this one has the tag snail mail. We don't have an automation for this one. We don't need one. They're just going to be tagged with snail mail. All right? So now when someone selects email from the list, an automation is going to run. And that automation to opt that contact into email, let me go back over here to our dashboard and I'll show you what that does. The opt into email into email here is going to add your general mailing list tag. You may choose to swap this out if you don't use general mailing list as a tag for your people who are on your general mailing list. You might want to modify that. Text is going to be similar, opt into, it's going to add a tag. It's going to opt them into text and it's going to send a campaign that that informs them that they're opted into text. They'll get both of those tags and all of it, right? When they opt into both. There we go. There's our text opt in confirmation. We've got our contact in. We've got our text tag added. We've got our general mailing list tag added. So if they do both, that's what they get. All right? So that is how we set up this one. So this list pick multiple under how would you like to hear from us? That is required. You want to make sure that you have added all of your opt in automations to these options. Okay? Now we are offering a snail mail option here. If you are not someone who wants to bother with that, you can simply delete these fields if desired. Note here that these are going to go straight into street address, city, state, postal code, country in your contacts file. Right? So you will actually have fully formatted correctly in an exportable format. All of your people who say, I want snail mail, like, so say, for instance, you want to send your happy mail once a month, you can filter your contacts for snail mail. And you can export the CSV that has their addresses so that you can easily go and print and get your shipping and all of that taken care of quickly and easily. Right? This is not a blank page, but it it looks blank. Allison, we're on the communication preferences page. Under settings, under leads and come right down here under fields and booking. All right? So here we're going to ask topics you're most interested in. And here we're telling them, select all that apply. This is a list pick multiple. It's not required. And it's going to go under past actions and we're going to go to edit this list. And if they want wellness tips and education, I'm tagging them with weekly wellness tips. Because then if we're doing the weekly wellness tips system that we offer with Get Oiling, then you could easily just add those people to the segment of your list that you're sending that content to. You can tag them however you wish for these. And of course, when you are maybe promoting an event, people who said, I want to hear about events, we can filter for those people and send that information out. Right? So this, I highly recommend making modifications to this based on your preferences. We will not send any automated communication out to them based on what's here. This is simply to allow us the ability to filter our list in the future and identify who is interested in what. Now, the next thing that we're going to do, this is where they get to choose what they hear from next, from you. This is optional. This is what do you want to learn next? You can again, position this as, you know, what class would you like to take next? If this is, you know, a drip campaign. We go to edit the list here. I've simply said name of resource attached campaign. So this I'm going to be, this is going to be the Ningxia red class. And here I'm going to add that campaign that I edited before, remember? Because it can deliver via email or text. There we go. And that applies, that's going to send out to them right away. Now this is choosing one, right? Because we don't want them. Here, if I click done here, you can see dropdown list, pick one. Because all of these options are going to apply campaigns, we don't want to send five, six, seven, 20 campaigns at the same time. Right? So here I'm going to put in thieves, household cleaner. And I'm going to put right here, campaign thieves. There we go. All things thieves. Here I can put in, you know, whatever you like, right? So I'm just going to have these two here for now. There we go. So they're going to select one of these two that are in this dropdown list. They're going to only be able to pick one of them. And then once they're done with that one, they can come back and choose another. And then here's our opt out options. This is another really important one for you to make modifications to. Pick any that, or sorry, pick one. This needs to be fixed. Pick one because this is a dropdown list, pick one. So if we go to edit, you're going to see no way I want to stay. Nothing changes. Opt out of email. Opt out. Opt contact out of email. Automation. Opt contact out of text. Opt out of all communication. Opt contact out of email and text. Those are those automations, right? Again, these are already made for you. Don't worry about it. You're good to go on these. Right? These are all, they're going to remove that text tag. They're going to opt them out as an automation function. Right? So it's going to actually opt them out of those options. So this is going to handle everything for you on autopilot. So when I click done and I save and view, and actually, let me just go like view the whole page here. So I could come down here and say, I would like to hear from you via email. I'm not going to put my, well, actually I am. So one, two, three, Main Street, Somersville, Missouri. And that's the US. Okay. So I am most interested in wellness tips and I would like to learn about events. I want, which of these do I want? I want the Ningxia class. And of course, I don't want to opt out. But if I wanted to, I could select one of these and none of this would really matter because I, you know, I don't want anything. Right? So I click update. It takes me to this preferences updated page. I could go to my homepage from here. I could go to the blog from here. I could be contacted from here. Right? So that's how that works. And if we go into our dashboard and check out that contact, here we go. The, let me see. So weekly wellness tips is now applied. Events is now applied. If I come down here, you can see in campaigns that Ningxia class is applied. Right? And here your communication preferences. This is the note. This is everything that she put in here. Also importantly, if we wanted to go here to edit, you can see that her street address is also here. Phone number is here. All of this is here. She is opted in. And yeah, and she's good to go. Right? So does this make sense? Isn't this awesome? I'm excited to see what you guys do with this. Feel free to ask away. Please put your questions into the Q and A if you can, so that we don't miss anything. All right. I'm planning online Zoom bingo in September. How fun. Is it best to promote them separately since the format is similar? But one is on oils and the second is on supplements. I heard it's good to practice to offer two choices, but not sure if it would be a confusing process for those that want to RSVP. Huh? I mean, why not do both? You know, just do them, you know, two different, do two different settings. I mean, because what you're ultimately doing, the purpose of having, you know, an oily bingo or a supplement bingo is to get people engaging with and learning about these products. So I mean, I would say, you know, yes to both and set them up as separate events. Right? So they came to the first bingo. Why wouldn't they come to the second one? Right? They came to the oils bingo. Why not come to the supplements bingo? Bring your friend. That's a great idea. And if you get some good engagement with that, I could see that being a fun thing that people could bring their friends to, particularly friends of like mind and interest, which is really what we're looking for here. Right? Okay. Allison says, this is more of a time management question and how to avoid overwhelm. If I can get on my Get Oiling dashboard daily, then the things don't build up. It feels great to clean that out. Currently I'm over 10 pages and some are five plus for one contact because it's all the same thing with the 90 day new customer follow-up plan or the weekly relationship building plan. Then there are other odds and ends. Maybe we'll be covering this in Momentum and it isn't the place for this question. So I think that, so if if what you're talking about is your to-do list for those contacts, you know, what what I would consider doing, and I do understand the, I do understand the the struggle with wanting to clear everything out. And there is a way to do it. And if you're really concerned about this and would like to just start over from scratch with these people, what you could do, Allison, because I know that you have access to all of those follow-up plans, is create one automation that removes all of those follow-up plans that gave you those to-dos and run those automations on those contacts that will remove all of the to-dos that are there from those automations. And then you can start up from scratch. We're not going to really get too deep into the weeds on on that feature during Momentum, but it's definitely something that we can address together there. But I think if you're feeling overwhelmed with the volume of to-dos and you're the type of person who can't ignore the old ones and just, you know, say, you know, oh, that's from a long time ago. It's not relevant anymore. If that passivity isn't something that you have access to, then create an automation. Apply that automation to your contacts such that it removes all of those follow-up plans and that should erase those to-dos. In the learn next, do we want to do campaigns, not automations? No, in the learn next, I would, well, it's up to you. Right? In the learn next, you could create an automation that adds a campaign. I like to default to using automations for this because often depending on what the thing is that they're asking for in terms of information, I might want to apply a follow-up plan as well, speaking of follow-up plans. Because, you know, if somebody says, I'm interested in this topic, I don't want to just know that somebody updated their preferences on my website. I want to know that somebody said, I want this from you. And if that's somebody that I can reach out to as quickly as possible to have a conversation about what goes in their next order or what goes in their first order, then that's going to be really important to me. So I actually really like the idea of using an automation as a starting point for here and not just attaching a campaign. Because in your automation, so let me just go back here. And and the question, you know, can you use, just put the campaign straight there instead of using an automation? Yes, technically you could. But let me show you my argument for using automations for this purpose. So I'm going to add the Ningxia class campaign, but maybe I also want to change my contact rating. Right? Because this person said, I'm interested in learning stuff from you. So that contact rating, I want to be reminded to check in on this person once a week and see how they're doing. Right? Or maybe every three days. I want to change this so that I'm reminded, hey, this is a person who's actively seeking information from me. I want to reach out. I want to make a personal connection. Right? So I might add that contact rating change. Or I might, if I wanted to be more dialed in about it, I might add a follow-up plan that has specific to-dos for me to perform, not just general contacts you may want, wish to reach out to, which is nice. But if you want more specificity, you would attach a follow-up plan here as well. If the campaign that's being attached is tied to a very specific interest, that's maybe not necessarily one that you had in your list, this is also an opportunity to apply a tag. So could you use a campaign in place of the automation when you're setting up the page for the what do I want to learn next? The answer is yes, you could. But I would argue that you would be better served by using an automation and bundling more actions in that instance. Felba is asking, Zoom bingo sounds like so much fun. Where can I find one? Is it something that you purchase? So that was someone whose name was not entered into Zoom. So if you are here in the chat still, person who asked about about bingo, if you could please, if you're open to it, share in the chat. Our community is very interested to hear what you want to do with that. I'm very curious about this too. I love that idea. Okay. Felba says, my gut feeling is most people when given a choice to choose from email or text will choose text. Okay. How about if you want to train your people to go to their email? I've heard you say in some trainings that email marketing is a better way to go. How can, how can you project if we'll have enough credits to cover the cost? So great questions. I absolutely do believe that email is for the long run, superior to text. Generally speaking, if someone is saying, I prefer text, that's going to be somebody who is already kind of checked out of email and don't, they don't really have a desire to engage with email at all. Right? If they're saying, don't send me emails, send me texts instead. So meet them where they are for now. But if you want to start encouraging people toward email, which again, highly recommend that you do, what I would do is have something that you offer that's highly desirable, that What I would do is have something that you offer that's highly desirable, that is only via email. Right? So maybe there's something that only email subscribers get. So, um, that, that might be what I do. So an example of this would be a newsletter. Right? Uh, because you absolutely should not need to, um, you know, go out and, uh, create like a webpage that has your newsletter on it and compose an email that has your newsletter on it. Right? Um, so you could say, I have a premium newsletter that I offer. It's only to email subscribers. And if they want it, they like what you have to say, they will figure it out and they'll get the email. Right? Otherwise they're missing out and FOMO is really powerful. Okay. Rhonda says, how do you get those who have opted out to go through this process? Some are automatically opted out due to the email service provider. Great question, Rhonda. Um, through get oiling, you can reach out to people one-on-one. So what I would do is reach out by whatever means you have access to. Uh, so I deal with this, like we're, you know, running momentum right now. We start our first call tomorrow and a decent number of people, I think, weren't receiving messages, uh, for whatever reason, because of their email service provider, or maybe that's just an email address. Uh, they didn't check. And, uh, and so, you know, I had to go in and figure out like, okay, well, I'm going to start texting people. Right? Cause I'm, I'm, you, they're not responding. Your call's coming up. Um, I need to text you. So, um, I have done that. I've reached out individually. You can, you know, pick up the chat, uh, feature, uh, use the chat feature, uh, and get oiling. It is a little bit more tedious, uh, but that, that would be how I approach that. You can reach out on a one-on-one basis though. If it, if they're opted out of email, you can still send a single email to that one person. Um, you're not blocked from doing that. You're just blocked from applying campaigns and sending bulk broadcast messages. Uh, what is the best method to clean up tags? I have contacts who have many specific tags instead of generic tags or segments. Would you suggest removing all and starting over? Great question. Uh, we do have a tag, uh, editor in your contact settings. If you wanted to just remove tags entirely, you can just X them out. And here's a great example of just way too many tags and many of which are not relevant anymore. So I would just maybe have a reminder for yourself to go in and, um, you know, and just kind of close out the ones that aren't, um, relevant anymore. Right? So maybe something that you're not, uh, using. So here we go. Here's one, January 2025. It's almost 26 now, so we're going to just go ahead and get rid of that one. Uh, here's another one from 23. I can get rid of that one. So you can go through and actually X them out. You can click them and rename them as well. So if you wanted to combine them, uh, or if you wanted to identify, okay, which of these things are similar, uh, such that I might be able to combine a bunch of people under the same tag, then I could come back here and delete the extraneous tags. You could do that as well. Right? So what that would look like is if I come into here and I see that I have, um, let's see, I have habits, hormone support and ma, oh, I have mom and moms. Oh, how about that? Mom and moms plural. So what I would do here is I would go into my contacts. I would go find my contacts that have mom. And maybe I don't want moms. I'm just going to use mom as a tag. I'm going to look for moms. I don't have any. All right, fine. I'll filter again, just for mom. And it could be that in this dummy account, I don't have that. Yeah, that's fine. So I could actually go in and just delete the one, uh, in my, my tags here. Uh, and get rid of the, the extra one that I don't need. It's not going to impact anything. But if you've got people who are on these tags and you want to maybe combine them in a new way, I would recommend filtering your contacts and applying the tag that you want to use for those people. So I would maybe go through and pick seven or eight of these tags and filter all my contacts for all of these tags. And everyone who is any one of those tags is going to show up. I apply a new tag to them, make sure they all have it. Then I go back and I delete the others, right? All seven that are left or however you want to do that. Okay. Uh, Bertha says, I create bingo cards from Baker's Bingo and send the zoom link along with the link for their bingo card so they can play online. Uh, it's a quick fun guess what or guess how to use the word description. She created it via chat GPT. Oh, interesting. Uh, Bertha is in our Facebook group. If you guys want to reach out and, uh, maybe, maybe if you want to post in there, that would be super welcome, I think. All right. Another question from Allison. Sounds like adding an automation that has the campaign, changes contact frequency and/or add follow-up plan from the pipeline follow-up plans. Uh, no, no, no. The, the pipeline follow-up plans that you're referring to, um, those are active prospecting. This is passive marketing. Completely different things. Active prospecting is, you know, this is somebody that I am actively engaging with in the hopes that I have a conversation with them that leads to a share. And when someone opts in on your website, that does show you that they're engaging with you, but it doesn't do the same thing as you having a direct one-on-one with them. So if you change their contact rating and you send them a DM, right? Or you text them directly or something like that, that starts that process. And from that point, you might start using, uh, those follow-up plans that you're referring to. But no, I would not, no, this, this is not. So basically when you think about, um, initiating, but so we're talking about the brand partner pipeline and the, um, marketing, uh, uh, was the marketing mastery workshop. Uh, we both talked about, uh, these, uh, separate stages of your brand partner pipeline and what you do in each stage. And we shared some automations and follow-up plans, uh, to help you stay on top of each stage of that process. And, um, yeah, so really importantly, when you are using those in the brand partner pipeline, those are not tied to automated communications. We are talking about two different sides of the same coin. They're both your business, but one of them is Allison is out there communicating with people directly one-on-one via email, via text, via DM, in person, et cetera. And the other side is Allison has this awesome thing happening on the backend of her business where people can stay engaged in an automated way and they know they're being engaged in an automated way. This isn't Allison reaching out to them directly. Right? These are different things. So the follow-up plan that you are talking about is not one that I would use in this instance. Um, oh, your son's getting married on Sunday. Congratulations. That's amazing. Yeah, don't overwhelm yourself with this. I promise we're going to keep this really simple, uh, in momentum. You're going to be good. Um, all right. Shouldn't be adding the relationship plan to all new people I start combos with. Yes, you should. But you're not starting a conversation with somebody who fills out a form on your website. You're identifying somebody who you could start a conversation with. So if somebody goes to this page that we've been talking about here today and they say, I want to hear from you via email or text, and here's the class that I want to get, that is somebody that you could reach out to. But until you do reach out to them and initiate a one-on-one conversation, you aren't in that active pipeline stage with that lead. They're just a lead. Right? Or they're just somebody who's on your customer list that's engaged in some minor way with the automated side of your website. Right? Um, so when you actually start conversations, meaning you, Allison, not a campaign, uh, or something automated from your system, you text that person, you email that person, you DM that person. That is when you would be adding that relationship building, uh, follow-up plan to start tracking, uh, your progress there. All right. Um, would you make this page a pop-up on your website? Uh, so, oh my goodness, let me show you guys really quickly. Thank you for sticking around and thank you Rhonda for bringing me back on track with that question. Um, so this page that we just created, right? This page right here. Here's what I want you to do with this. I want you to copy this link and I want you to go into every one of the campaigns that you have listed right here. And I want you to add this to the, the, maybe the last message of that campaign. Add this link and say, would you like to keep learning more? Click here to go and update your preferences and pick a new class. Right? Add this to the last, the link to this page. You add to the last page of your campaign messages. And the other most important place for you to, uh, to put this. If you go into your settings here, go to general. And, uh, let's see. Update preferences. Get my resources. Put this in your signature. So everything that goes out is going to, uh, have this option available so that they aren't just looking for unsubscribe at the very, very bottom of the email. They see this and they, and they say, oh, I just don't want the emails anymore. I just want to get her texts. And then they can click this, open it up. And then they can opt in, they can give you snail mail address. They can pick the new campaign, all of that kind of stuff. So I wouldn't make this a pop-up on the website because really what this is for is for the people who are already connected to you, uh, to be able to, uh, to connect with you further. Right? Another thing you can do, if you upload your VO file, you shouldn't be marketing automatically to everybody that's on your VO list. Uh, because again, those aren't all your personals. They don't all know you. You can legally contact them, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's welcome or wanted. So what you could do here is you could share this link in a broadcast to those people. Uh, and, and invite them to start receiving resources from you. Right? So they can, you can say, hey, I, I have your information because I'm someone who is a part of your support team with Young Living. If you would like to get messages from me, I'd love to send them to you. I can send you education that you're interested in. Uh, and if you would rather not, there are options there too. And so there you are giving people who are on the VO file, who maybe know that they don't know you and they don't want to hear from you. You can get them right off of your list and now you're not sending to people who don't open, who don't engage, who mark you as spam, et cetera. So not a pop-up, but I would pop it everywhere that you are sending messages. So your Kim, uh, your, um, your signature, that global signature in your contact settings is a great place to start. Um, Darcy, I wouldn't put this opt-in page on your social media. A much more effective thing to put on your social media would be a landing page. So the landing page that offers your weekly wellness tips, a landing page that offers any other free stuff that you offer, uh, or maybe a page on your website that links to all of the free stuff that you offer. So a landing page is going to be more effective. Uh, because again, what we want to make sure that we're doing here is, uh, serving the people who have already said yes in some way, whether they said yes to Young Living and then they're in your organization or they're a lead or customer from some other means. Uh, we want to make sure they're well taken care of once they're there. So this I wouldn't promote, uh, anywhere other than internally. Uh, and externally, that's where you want to put your landing pages. Uh, so if you are using our weekly wellness tips, uh, then that's going to be the landing page, that tip Tuesday, uh, weekly wellness tips landing page. And by the way, if you guys don't know where to find that, if you aren't using that yet,